Okay, we're -- good evening, everyone. We're going to call our normal city council work session into order. It's Monday, February the 26th, 2024, 4:30. We're a little bit behind. I apologize for that. First on the agenda, guys, is a presentation by Principal Tanya Harrelson of J. Larry Newton Elementary School. Hey, Ms. Tanya.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. I want to welcome Ms. Harrelson here tonight to present on behalf of J. Larry Newton. As y'all know, this is the second presentation that we've had by a local school. This is our effort to educate everybody about what we're doing with the three-mil money and to let them know all the wonderful things that are happening in our school system. So, Tanya?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Mayor and City Councilwoman, on behalf of J. Larry Newton and our faculty and staff and students, I can't thank you enough for the three-mil investment you and the citizens have made into our community. What that money allows us to do at J. Larry Newton to help students be successful and show academic growth is unbelievable. And so, I brought -- I made a short video for you to see. I thought about, what can I do to show you how this money is working at J. Larry Newton? And I wish that I could just bring all of you to school and let you walk around and take a tour. And since that's not possible, I'm going to bring school to you.
All right.
How can I help you?
I have an appointment to visit with Mrs. Harrelson, please.
I need to see some ID, please. Let me check Ms. Harrelson's calendar. Come on in.
Welcome to J. Larry Newton Elementary School. I'm Tanya Harrelson, principal. Come on in. I'd love to show you around. Please know you are always welcome to come visit us in person, but until you can come to school, I will bring school to you. Newton includes grades pre-K through sixth grade. Currently, we have 850 students and 115 employees. Out of those 115 employees, 72 are certified staff members and the remaining 43 are support staff. Three-mil funds 11 positions. Thanks to the citizens of Fairhope, three-mil funding provides six additional certified teachers, four support staff employees, and one social worker. As you can see, we are using 100% of the funds from three-mil on people to serve our students. These people help students show academic growth and experience success in the classroom. Let's take a tour of the school and find these 11 employees in action. First, let's stop by the STEAM lab. Our STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics teacher actually teaches all 850 students. That is hard to believe, but it is true. Each classroom has a set time to come to the STEAM lab for instruction once every other week. Our STEAM teacher introduces a new lesson with objectives taken from that grade level's course of study. Students receive whole group and small group instruction. Best Practices allows the STEAM teacher to use a variety of guided practice activities, followed by small group and independent hands-on learning opportunities designed for mastery of skills. The STEAM teacher also sponsors a robotic club that meets before school. Students in this club build and write software code to control their robots. The STEAM lab is very impressive. As you can see, students love learning here. Next, let's visit our literacy and technology coach. This teacher works with students who need extra help in reading. The reading coach works with students in small group, and she spends a great deal of time co-teaching with general education teachers. Both teachers can provide instruction to meet individual student needs. The goal is to provide extra support in reading across the curriculum. Now, let's see what our math coach is doing. Her role is very similar to the role of our reading coach. Like our reading coach, the math coach works hand-in-hand with a general education teacher to identify students in need of extra help in math, and she helps in teaching mathematical skills as outlined in the grade level's course of study. Working with students in small groups is key to giving students what is needed for them to show academic growth. Providing individualized intervention is important at each grade level in both reading and math. Let's visit our intervention coordinator and both of our part-time intervention teachers. Our intervention coordinator works with the PTIs and students in need. The PTIs are retired teachers. These three teachers are considered experts in using strategies to help students show growth in reading and math. Our intervention program prides itself on helping students move from where they are to where they can benchmark. The instruction given is intentional and targeted, addressing students' individual needs. Now, let's find our four instructional aides. These employees are the most flexible employees on campus. They serve with a positive attitude and work tirelessly to support students and teachers. They work with students in small groups and individually. Having an extra set of eyes and hands in the primary grades helps the teachers keep the lesson moving along and helps everyone stay on track. Let's make our way to visit our social worker. While walking there, we will find our two other instructional aides. This classroom is where we find an instructional aide helping students with their math assignments. The instructional aide is able to reinforce the steps needed to solve math problems. Students have the luxury of receiving help from both a teacher and instructional aide. The instructional aide in this classroom is helping students with their English Language Arts assignment. Individualized instruction is being provided as needed. This helps the students remain engaged and focused on their learning. And finally, let's visit our social worker. Sometimes, she is meeting with small groups of students, while other times, she is meeting with one student and possibly a family member. The social worker addresses psychological and social issues the student is having that may hinder learning. She also works with outside support services or agencies to assist students and their families who need additional resources. Hopefully, you can easily tell what an impact three-mil funding has on students at J. Larry Newton. Without these funds, these student services would be impossible to duplicate. Our goal is for all adults at J. Larry Newton to do their part to help students show academic growth and experience success in the classroom. We are dedicated to maximizing our instructional time and making the very most out of each instructional day. It takes a village to educate a child, and our Fairhope Village is working hard to make sure our students receive the best education possible. Thank you for visiting J. Larry Newton Elementary. I hope you enjoyed your tour. You are welcome to visit us at any point in person. Thanks, Ann. Go Pirates!
Thank you. I just want to emphasize, 100% of the money we receive from the three-mil funds goes to people to service students. None of the money is going for materials or instructional supplies or computer software. It's all going to employ people, and as you can see, a lot of lives are touched. And if this funding weren't there, that would be a lot of students that we just couldn't meet those individual needs. So, again, to the citizens of Fairhope, Mayor Sullivan, the City Council, thank you so much for your support in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. All right. Okay, all right. So, yeah, you know, we will continue with this series. I think we're doing one feeder pattern at the end of each month, our second meeting, whenever we meet here again, our public meeting. So, what we're trying to stamp and what we want the constituents and the community to understand is how important this three-mil tax is to our community, for our children, which leads to the future of Fairhope. You know, the kids are the future. You know, I know we get old and bogged down, and we're getting different seasons of our lives, but you have to always remember, you were there once, and they're the ones that's going to come up after you. So, their education is very, very important, and this three-mil tax is doing exactly what we envisioned it. I stress, I'm on that board, you know, it's even far passing our expectations. So, as the president, I thank you as well for your support in that and supporting our kids, because I and most of us still here either have grandchildren or kids that are still in this particular program here in Fairhope. So, thank you, guys, again. All right. Next on the agenda is a discussion of our working waterfront. This is something that we've had, this is oil money that we get, and now we have to figure out exactly how we're going to move forward. And Ms. Love, I think you're going to help us with a little bit of information on that.
Yes, I am going to provide some information.
Thank you.
Hopefully, to help you make a decision.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, if y'all will remember, this is a Restore Act funding. This is bucket one, which there's a lot of complication with all of the different buckets, but bucket one is treasury-focused. So, this, it's been going on for a while. They did design, and we got to the point of finally being able to send it out to bid. We put out the first bid in July of 2023. At that time, there were no bids. So, we went back, we went with the prime contractor, which is Goodwin Mills in K-wood. They went back, they revised the bid a bit, they tightened up some of their documents. We reissued the bid in September of 2023. In October, that was our bid day, we got, we received one bid. And it was significantly higher than what we are awarded through our Restore Grant. So, at that time, we recommended to council that we reject the bid, and because there was only one bid, it was, we were able to go back and negotiate with them. So, Richard Johnson and Goodwin Mills in K-wood went back to that contractor, and they have renegotiated the scope, value engineered, as you could say, and they have brought the price down pretty significantly by, the cost estimate was reduced approximately 1.6 million, which is fairly good. Again, remember that this project was, the application was put in in about, in 2019, I think. I think it's 2000. So, over that time, costs have definitely gone up, and that's happening with a lot of these projects. You know, they were all awarded back in, or applied for back in 2019, 2020, and the costs have just gone up significantly. So, so, still with the new budgeted amount, we are still at an overrun. So, we have an overrun of about 4.7 million. So, at this point, you know, City Council needs to basically, you know, we need to decide whether City Council wants to fund the whole overrun, or if we can actually go to Restore Council. And it's not even Restore Council, it's the Alabama Gulf Coast Recovery Council. So, this is, there are all these different buckets of money. I could go into, I could probably explain for an hour of all these different buckets of money. But we have not, we, a lot, as I said, a lot of these projects have gone overrun, so there are a lot of organizations and municipalities that are coming back and asking for more money from the Restore Council, Treasury Department. So, we have an opportunity to do that, and the, you know, we kind of did a lot of cost estimate analysis. We looked at, you know, a 50-50 split of that overrun, a 75-25 split of the overrun, 80-20. It's really going to be up to council to decide how much we want to ask AGCRC and Restore Council for, in terms of how much we want to ask them for in the overrun.
Okay. So, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Love. I, Council, the biggest thing that we have today is to understand, there's a couple of questions of whether we want to outright pay the 4.7, and I know most of us up here as stewards are not really wanting to pay the whole amount, especially when we know that there is opportunities for funds available, whether it's tier one or tier two or tier three. There's opportunities for us to solicit and apply for funds. So, you know, without us voting on it, I know what my opinion it would be for us to go back and solicit for those funds, whatever we can get, because beggars can't be choicy. Some is better than nothing. As you saw, there were some options where we put 50-50, 25-75, 20-80. So, I think that's the decision that we would have to make, is do we go back and ask for those extra funds? And whatever we get, we go with it. And then, from there, then we will make a decision, knowing that they're not going to give us the whole, we're not going to be whole. Do we want to pay the overage? And how are we going to pay the overage? This is what the public wants to know. Those type of things, do we have the money to do it? And I believe, yes. All those answers are yes. Is that correct, Mayor? Yes. So, that's where we are right now. Those are decisions that we'll have to make when it comes across our desk.
And too, just, of course, visiting with Nicole and visiting with the folks at ACNR. I mean, we really feel like if we contribute some, that, you know, obviously, there's only a limited number of dollars that they have to plus up these projects. There are a lot of folks coming to them, obviously, to plus up projects. We can't take that whole bucket. So, I mean, I would recommend a 70, 75-25 split, which would put the city's portion at a little over a million dollars. Councilman Robinson had asked some questions. There are some things that really have to be done down there, whether we, you know, move forward with this project or not. The seawall needs to be addressed. The fountain is leaking, it needs to be addressed. We need new handrails on the pier. All those items in general would, right now, by the current bid, would equal close to $2 million. Those are things that we know that we're going to need to do. So, I do feel like there's, you know, value in moving forward with this project. And again, if we can get this project done and it costs the city out of pocket, you know, a little over a million dollars, I think it's a good option for us.
Yeah. Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, I mean, I think I was in favor of that 75-25 split. If we can get them to do that, and if they come in lower, then I think we just, well, we, yeah, take what we get, or we make a decision.
Right.
Yeah, come back to the table. Yeah.
You know, I agree with that. I think it makes the most sense to go back and ask for more, and if they say no, then we know what decision we have to make. We either have to pony up all of it or figure out what we, how comfortable we are moving forward, knowing what the price tag officially is going to be.
You got anything, Booney? I hear you laughing.
I've said this all along. You've got nothing to lose, you've got to know now.
Yes. I think the first step would be go back, Ms. Love. I think it's what I'm hearing from the councils, the first step, Mayor, would be to go back and offer, what are we going to offer?
Yes, we will draft the letter to ADCNR, and then their process will start from there to, to, you know, figure out how much they're going to, if they are going to give us any and how much they will give us. And then, from there, we'll be able to come back to you, and we'll also, at that point, hopefully, we'll be able to get to construction, which is what we had on the agenda today, was to approve the bid. But we have to, we have to get all of our funding in order before we can assign, award the contract to the contractor, so.
Right. So, at the next meeting, we will, we will come back to y'all with a resolution just to approve the additional funds. So, we have that. We'll go ahead and start the process with ACNR, the Restore Council will get that moving, and then come back with the resolution to secure the extra funds, and then we would come back, once we hear back from them, and award the bid contingent on the funding. Correct.
So, just a quick question. We know for sure, and I'm just being devil's advocate, and I'm sure some of the patrons are thinking the same thing, so I'm trying to think what they would think. We got that one bid, and so now that we're still in this process, when we bid it out, that company would be bidding this out?
We won't, we will not rebid it.
No.
We will not, okay, that's the, okay, that's just clarification.
We are going with the cost estimate that the contractor.
We will go with this bid, okay, and then we will move forward.
That's correct.
I just want to clarify. All right. Very good. Very good. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, guys, we have discussion of the agenda item number three is discussion of the Historic Preservation Commission Ordinance. We have, I guess, Brother Williams, are you going to kind of present, or is there a, someone that, from the historical preservation, that wants to come and kind of speak on this? You know, lately, we've been getting some attention as far as people's thoughts on what we've put out in the public from the, I think, the final ordinance that we've kind of printed out and publicized, and I think there were a lot of questions. So, if we can kind of speak on some of those questions that came from the public, I think that would help a lot.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mara Hunter, and I am a co-chair of the Historic Preservation Committee here in Fairhope. I live at 356 Equity Street in Fairhope. And I thank y'all for putting this on the work session again. We have been talking about this for, feels like a year, but actually, it's more like 25 years, I think, and.
No exaggerations.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an exaggeration. And so, we started again, I guess it was a year ago in May, with our first presentation to the public, and then we went into a lot of monthly meetings going over the ordinance, and then we presented at City Council two or three times. And so, in this process, what we gathered is that Fairhope is at a point in its development that it needs an historic preservation program, which is vital to all cities as they grow, and Fairhope is getting bigger very quickly. We hear from a lot of people that something needs to be done, but yet, we also hear and understand that people want to maintain their property rights. And so, we went to look at a lot of historic preservation models, and what we learned is that there are some very strict programs, like in Georgetown, DC, but we also learned that there are a lot of models that do allow for hyper-local preservation and a lot of choice. And the words that we've used is not, it's not a one-size-fits-all, that we can craft a program that fits Fairhope's unique needs and so, and desires. And so, that's what we've tried to do. And the, by the time the committee went through the model ordinance that the state produces, and we also did look at the enabling legislation, and we did our best not being lawyers trying to put that together. And ultimately, what we concluded is that, which, two things. We presented a pared-down version of the ordinance, first of all, that tried to strip away a lot of the powers associated with the certificates of appropriateness and things like that. We also understood and concluded, after we read both documents very closely, that the city could create a historic commission, but not historic districts. And the historic districts are those things that would come with certificates of appropriateness. Historic commission in itself does not, historic commission would do a lot of things like a nonprofit, statistics, et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't want to review all of this, but it's for people who haven't been to our meetings that I'm going through this history. So, we presented this model ordinance, or our version of the ordinance, which was stripped down, and then this went to the City Council for discussion, and then it also went through the lawyers, couple of iterations there. And what, and we should leave that discussion with Chris Williams, because he did that work, and our understanding was with the version that's presented most recently in December, is that Chris, Chris Williams thought that something closer to the model as opposed to a pared-down version would achieve the city's goal of a CLG. I think that was the approach, but you can explain that. And so, you know, at the end of the day, the committee are not lawyers, and so, we defer to the people who work on the city law day-to-day. However, I will conclude by saying that we are confident and hopeful that something can be done to enact a preservation program that will allow the city to get the grants that it needs, that can support voluntary preservation, and that all people in Fairhope can feel comfortable with as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there were a couple of things I know that I read in consideration to what we had presented to the community. Bless you. God bless you. One of the things she, Mark, kind of tapped on was the creation of districts, and that right now, and you help me, Chris, if I speak out of ignorance, right now, this is just an ordinance, and the districts are not created in this ordinance, per se.
That's correct.
That is correct. So, we're not even at the stage of whether we're going to have districts. We would have the ability to have districts, but that's a total other process to do districts right now. And right now, what we have is just an ordinance to put ourselves in position to be a CLG. And you, the first step is to create an ordinance in order to get that status.
That's correct. And this ordinance does set forth the process for a later ordinance to establish a district or designate a specific property as historic. But this ordinance does not designate any specific property or any specific district. It establishes the commission in the future process, if council is inclined to go that way.
If council is inclined to go that far. So, what I was getting from the community, please don't make my neighborhood, if you do this ordinance, you're going to ruin my neighborhood, you're going to take money out of my pocket. And when someone says that, my ears poke up, because I don't want anybody taking money out of anybody's pocket, you know, and I have empathy for that. But in this case, just to decrease the misinformation and the confusion, we are not even there at this time. This is just to create the first step of a historical preservation. There might not even be an ordinance to create districts. That has to, that's a whole other process. But what this does, it helps us start a process of protecting some of the history of Fairhope. And Fairhope is getting pretty old. I mean, at one point, I know one of my guys here on stage with me, you know, he's like, "We ain't old enough yet," you know, but we're getting there now. You know, we're at, we're at 130, right? 130 years, I believe, because this year is 24, so that's a zero number. Is that right, Mike? Yeah, I think, 1894. So, yeah, so, I mean, you know, I think the magic number for most people, as far as the newspaper language, is 200 years. They like that number. They're thinking, if you're 200 years from just talking to people, then that's a, that's a great number to have a historical preservation. But we're close. We're at 130, and I, me personally, I think we're going in the right direction as far as preserving the history of this place. If we would have had this ordinance, per se, I'm going to give you guys an example. If we would have had this ordinance, per se, we would have had an opportunity to save a home, the Nancy Lewis home, because, speaking with the historical preservation, having this ordinance in place would have gave opportunity to capitalism with tax credits, meaning we would have incentivized the builders to do what's right, to preserve that history with monetary value. I mean, it would have cost them, because there were grants and things, as long as they went through the process, to be able to save that house and even move it, you know, to another historical site. But we don't, we didn't even have anything set up, structure-wise, to do that, and that was one of the first freed slaves here in Fairhope, which is American history, since we're in Black History Month. I mean, that's American history. That's a big-time deal. They helped build this place. So, I think we're going, in my opinion, I think we're going in the right direction, and I think some of the things that the people are worried about, I think they're jumping the gun. So, I would like for them, the public, to bear with us on this, if I could ask that from you. I don't think this is in any intent to take money out of anyone's pocket. In actuality, it will help put money in your pocket if you're doing the right things with it. There's possibilities of that. That's all I got. That's my soapbox for today. Anything, Chris, do you want to speak on anything with this? Is there any information that you want to clear up or clarify legally? That's, you know, anything?
No, I'm here to answer questions. I think you nailed it on step one versus step three and four.
Thank you.
And certainly, with the process, if council down the road and acts this ordinance, and then. And certainly, with the process, if council down the road and acts as ordinance, and then after the process is complete, in terms of a survey and a map and identifying potential property, council would have the opportunity as part of that to amend an ordinance and, and upgrade, update the process. And obviously, that would come after a public hearing. All the property owners would be on notice, and again, that's three and four steps removed from where we are.
That's right.
But there certainly would be more dialogue before any of that could even start to take place.
And, and that's really the message that I wanted to publicize and to vocal today, that there is, there is a process to all of this. There's nothing that anybody could do to ninja this thing into play. There's no abracadabra, and we will go through the process, and there has been nothing that has said that we were going to do districts at this time at all. That hasn't even come up, you know? I'm all for the most relaxed historical preservation that we can have, to be honest. However that works, that's what I'm for, you know? Because I do believe in people's property rights, and I, and I want people to be able to do what they want with their properties, for sure, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're responsible in a leadership position to preserve history as it's done all across the nation. That's why this particular legislation was enacted in 1894. So, anyway. All right. Jay, you got, Jimmy, you got anything on this? Anybody?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I got a question.
Yes, sir. You two, can y'all please put your phones on silent?
If you remind me to turn it back off, I'll sure take care of that problem. Uh, I'm assuming, making sure I'm correcting this, but this process is an A, B, C, D process, where we can't do B and C and D until we get A done. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
But the purpose of getting B, C, and D done is getting A done, and then you're going to, the purpose of getting A done is do B, C, and D?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Then what's the purpose of having, if...
Depends on what B, C, and D are.
We've had this argument on historical district the whole time, and the whole problem is there's no meat, or there's no teeth to the rules of the historical committee. But first, you got to set it up in a historical committee. So once you set it up, to get to B, C, and D parts, which is, I think, what everybody is going to have a problem with, because it is going to cost.
Booney, if I may, what...
And I may be ahead of the game, I'm just asking some questions.
Yeah, but when you're saying what people have a problem with, let's, let's, let's speak, so you, so everybody's clear. What's your, what's your thought when you say B and C in layman's terms? What are you speaking on?
To setting rules to where I own a piece of property today that is considered by a committee, a historical committee, I think, and I can't tear it down, I'm going to have to rebuild it, and to rebuild it could cost me more money, to be very, very simple about this.
Okay.
But if I tore it down, I would have that problem.
Right.
But I'm not going to be allowed to tear it down, because it's now under a commission's idea of being historical.
Right. So, so those, those are all concerns that, you know, were first brought up when we first discussed this, as, when I was a councilman, probably five years ago now, and it was one of the reasons it kind of went away, was because that, that concern over historic preservation dictating what I can build, what color I paint my house, you know, what windows I put in, all of those things. And, and so, while that can be a part of a historic preservation commission, it doesn't have to be. And so, the way this was drawn up was with those critiques in mind, is that the commission, as it's been designed here, would, would have more of an educational, a, a more, role more of as an advocate for historic preservation, but with the possibility to have certain inputs after districts have been designated, and property owners have been notified, and public hearings have been held to determine whether or not those properties in that district are historic in nature. And so, it's not a, we pass this historic preservation ordinance, and the commission goes out and has the authority to tell Marcus what color his house can be, or what windows he's got to put in, or any kind of, anything related to the integrity of the design or concept of his home. So, there are, this is step A to, to some of those things taking place, but, but it's not, it doesn't create a vacuum where a historic preservation commission is enacted, and then all of a sudden, all of these powers take hold, and they can do all of these different things. It's, I mean, it's a, it's a baby step.
And if I may, this is also step A to an entirely different route, which is CLG status, funding, and certain types of opportunities from a financial standpoint, that is B, C, and D, not B, C, and D, as in limiting people's use to what they can do on their house.
And, and so, this is, as you, as you go and you do, and Jimmy, you jump in any time, Councilman Conyers.
Yeah, go ahead.
As you go in and you do a little bit of due diligence, when you get that CLG, and we were speaking about capitalism and, and money and profits and homes, you know, first of all, if you were living in an area that had historic and has already been demolished, then the people that are on the commission will be educated and vetted to where they will be able to tell you if your house is historical anymore or not. And, and I'm not a historical preservationist, but if your house is torn down and it's a brand-new commercial, a, a, a brand-new build, then it's not 100 years old anymore, it's a new home, and it's, you know, now, that land may be, but that, that's getting into weeds, but, but my point is, they're not just going to go picking homes, there will be a process to do with that. And with this, the, the point is to put you in a situation where you can make money and get grants to do the things that need to be done to sustain the historical nature of it. Not to go into patrons' pockets, but to put them in a position where they could know how to file grants and applications to sustain those properties historical. And that's putting money in your pocket and not taking it from your pocket. And that's a little bit different.
Yeah, I would just add, I think Chris hit the nail on the head. This is the first step in either direction you want to go. So, to me, the, the issue's always been, you want to create an environment that encourages historic preservation through financial incentives and through education, not through police action of telling people what they can and can't do with their property. Because I know that, you know, Baldwin County, fair about, there's a lot of people that don't want to be told what color your house has to be, or what you, you know, what, what type of house you have. But I think also, a lot of times, what people really want is they sort of want the facade that has that historic look to it, not so much that they want you to have a house that doesn't have air conditioners and things like that. The interior, a lot of times, I think, is probably more of an aesthetic issue rather than an actual historical functioning property. But I, I think this is the step you've got to go to be able to have access to those grants and that funding. So, council controls it, my understanding to that point, so you take this step, which was the whole purpose of the Historic Preservation Committee 20, 25 years ago when they were formed, was to make a recommendation and pursue establishment of a historic commission. So, you know, this is step one, and then there's A, B, C, and then sub-part two, A, B, and C. You know, there's a lot of different options you can go to from there.
Yeah. All right. Okay. All right, guys. Committee updates.
I don't have anything since last week.
I know, right?
This is going fast.
I'd say, yeah, I'd say something about historic preservation, but I think everybody just got their fill.
We got a lot of that. Yep. Okay. Booney, anything?
No, sir.
All right. I, Airport Authority is tomorrow. I'll speak on the REC Board. We had REC Board meeting on Wednesday, I believe it was, I can't, but went well. We, we discussed a five-year plan. We discussed things that we would triage in that five-year plan, the things that we were doing. I, I really believe that we're in good standing with REC. I know that those old baseball fields, we got to do something to those. That's something we've been talking about for 11 or 12 years, but I really have faith that we'll get that done in the near future. We also spoke about understanding that we were short with facilities as far as gymnasiums. The discussion of how the Baldwin County School Board was providing some gymnasiums, but it still would not meet our needs as far as the kids that we have, and the extrapolation of families we have coming in with children as far as gyms are concerned. There's also a lot of interest in the community for volleyball with our girls, and we also need space for wrestling in our community as well. So a gym, a multi-use gym purpose is going to go well, and, and we are also working on, we have budgeted funds, working on our master plan for our 114 acres that we will start soon here. So, so recreation is, is going well, and we had a lot of good conversation. I think that's all I have as far as communities is concerned. All right. All right, here we go, guys. Department head updates. Let's get to it.
I've got item number 10. It's for media for our Parkson, they call it a fuzzy filter, but it's, it's a filtration for our wastewater treatment plant, Effluent. It's about nine years old, and they, the manufacturer recommends that it gets changed out every eight to 10 years.
That, that particular piece is, is at the very end of the process?
It's, it's...
Or it dumps into the bay?
It's, it's a filter that collects the suspended solids before it gets hit with UV.
That's right. Okay. And this was budgeted?
Correct.
Got any more while you're up there?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, my other brother, Darrell.
Thank you, sir.
All right. All right.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
Wes, my man.
I have agenda item number 14. It's just a reclassification of a pay grade. Pretty straightforward. Just want to make sure you didn't have any questions.
All right. We're, Personnel Board was not unanimous on that one, Wes?
Yes, sir.
All right. From a six to an eight. All right. Same, we, we, that's a new hire from within, or are we...
No, it's a current, it's a current job, we're just reclassifying the grade.
Just reclassifying.
Yes, sir.
Moving on up, like the Jeffersons.
That's right.
I got you, brother. All right. All right, that's pretty straightforward. All right, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Wondering how many other TV shows you're going to be able to incorporate into the rest of the agenda.
Oh, I can do it. I'm a 70s kid. All right. Don't be scared, Richard. He was looking around like, anybody, anybody?
Or they call me a camera hog.
You try to be humble. Y'all gotten to him, he's humble now.
Thank you, sir.
That's right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
This is actually a good problem to discuss with you, but I'm pretty sure you've part of your agenda, and I wonder if I was being cryptic. I have item number eight. As you recall, the council took affirmative action back last year to make the move to convert Pine Street between Section and Bancroft to one-way, with maximizing on-street parking as part of that. It's not only a safety project, but really a streetscape project. So we worked with y'all, and you guys were good enough to put the capital dollars into the budget, and we got the design put together and went out to bid. And it's very rarely, if you look at the three lowest bids, are literally separated by $4,000. And, but one of the things that we talked about, if the budget would allow, was to look at maximizing parking beyond just the base bid. So the little sketch I gave you, you'll see the parking places on the northwest, those 14 angled parkings, which are going to be pervious pavers, there's tree wells, lighting, Ben has found us a beautiful fixture going that street, eight-foot concrete sidewalk on the north side and connecting the six-foot concrete sidewalk on the south side, so you have complete streetscape there, as well as tree wells with trees to be planted in them. But we did ask for the contractor to give a response for an additive alternate to add the seven parking places that I have listed there on the southeast corner as 1A through 7A. Now, here's where it gets kind of tough. If you look at the, the base bid, the low bidder is James Brothers Excavating at $212,627.
And Ds.
Then you look at the additive alternate that RHDs came in at 35 versus 39, 909, and thus, if council chooses to gain the additional 50% more on-street parking, then that bid would be awarded to RHDs at a bid of 251, 398 versus the 252, 536. It is very rare that you have a bid that is separated by half percent. It's a good problem to have, but I did discuss this with Marcus earlier, and, and that is the bid law, depending. So, now you asked for my recommendation. I think to get 50% more on-street parking for $35,000 is something to consider. Worked with Kim and the mayor, we have some capital dollars that we can move around, because we had some underrun on other capital projects, so it's not a matter, we have to go find the dollars, those have been identified. But really, it's y'all's decision what you want to do. It always is hurtful that one contractor would get it if we do X, and another contractor gets it if we do Y, but that's the state bid law, and, and, you know, to, to lose something by 1,200 bucks is a tough loss if you're, if you're outbidding for work. But it's a good problem for us to have, because I think we've got very competitive numbers here. So, if you ask me what my recommendation was, when, when you have folks like Rick Holland, those that come in and tell you that a downtown parking space is worth $200,000 annually in economic benefit, to get seven of them for $35,000 seems like a pretty good return on investment. So, that's, that's what we got to do, and so, we did phrase it that there's either alternative one or alternative two. And, you know, one is the base bid, which would go to James Brothers Excavating. Option number two is base bid plus additive alternate would go to RHD. So, I'll leave that up to y'all to, to make that motion, but that's the problem that we're in, and it's a good problem to have.
So, just, yeah, it's a great problem. Thank you, and I, I know what I would do. I mean, it's a no-brainer to me, but I'm just one of a fifth. Lisa, when we do this, we would, we wouldn't really have to amend it, correct? We would just, we would just award the bid, okay? But we could keep the resolution pretty much the same, but we would stamp who we're going with.
Correct.
Yeah, we would take out the OR and say to RHD. Yep, just making sure. Okay. Yeah, I think it's a no-brainer. The, the, so I guess, there's a little business right there close to the Bancroft, I'm sure they, they have, I mean, that little, what is that little business down at the bottom near Bancroft?
It was a hairdresser. I don't know what's going in there now.
It was like a chef that was going in there that was going to do some, like have some small bricks there.
Yeah, okay, but there, there's no problem with that with them, I'm sure.
Well, it's all in our right of way, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And it's public parking.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. It gives them, I mean, that's a win for them, so God bless them. But yeah, that's a, that's a win-win, man, and I was looking at the numbers, I think one of them, even just with the total deal, they still win, the Ds with everything, you know, their little number.
That's correct.
Yep, so, yep, okay.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening.
Evening, sir.
I have items, let's see, 11 and 12. Starting with number 11, the bleacher seating, grandstand seating with attached press box for the new track facility at Founders, came in just a little over $7,000 over budget with the bid, but I have good news.
What's that?
The shade structures that we are doing over the bleachers for the softball fields at Founders, we had budgeted $64,000, and we are going to do the work in-house for around $23,000 for a saving, savings of $40,000 on that project. Item number 12 is the, I'm sorry, I just got that backwards, didn't I?
That's okay, we got you. So, you just did 12.
No, no, you just did 11.
I did 11. 11 is for the bleachers.
That's right.
11 is for the bleachers at Founders, 12 is for the bleachers at...
Correct.
12 is for the bleachers at Valanta on the new fields, and these will be smaller bleachers, just three rows high, but they will be 21 feet in length, so I think that those will accommodate a good number of fans for those fields. That was not a line item in the budget, but I had $144,000 budgeted for shade structures at Valanta, and we're not going to touch that. but it was not, so we, we are just wanting to shift that money from, from that budget of 144,000. So, just so you know, at Valanta, we'll have 18 shade structures total, the, they're around $3,000 apiece, so that'll be $54,000, so we, we're not coming anywhere close to 144,000.
Versus 144,000, okay, very good, awesome, hey, I love it.
Great.
I love it, yeah, I love it. Which bleachers?
I was told 190 days, no at Fenner's.
It's for Valanta or Valanta?
Valanta, I can get in here pretty quickly.
Except if you're having to quit before you get in at 60.
I don't know about opening day, but I'll do my best.
Opening day is March the 16th?
No, no. March 9th.
March 9th, okay. Pat, one thing, just to let the public know, those, that, that, the bleachers at Founders will equal 400 seats?
Around 400 seats.
400 seats.
And it'll have an attached prefab press box.
And it have attached press box, and the PA will be done with the Booster Club.
The Booster Club has agreed to fund the PA system.
So, we will have a PA system.
Right.
The, they, when they deliver, they, this is a, a lump sum, they do all the labor, put it together, and in that 190 days is thinking about the whole deal.
That's completion.
Get here, put it together, in that time, done.
Correct.
Okay, that's what, just clarified, not just delivery, got it, okay.
Right.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council, I've got, see, item 13, we're gonna be adding fees to our annual support agreement with Tyler Technologies, this is for their, their product called Notify. Some of y'all may recall, we had a product in the past called Everbridge, and we found that it just didn't work, as well as we hoped it to, and so, what, what our immediate goal for Notify is to, to get in the, to be able to get in touch with our employees quickly, not everyone has a city email address, so this will give us a way to send text messages and phone calls to city employees that don't have city email. eventual goal is to get to where we can contact our utility customers more easily and efficiently. So, let's say if we had to do a, take the power offline on Oak Street, we could, you know, send, just select Oak Street and send a notification out to those customers to let them know that we're gonna be doing, performing service in that area. So, it'd be an additional $6,000 added each year, so that's what I'm asking for, any questions?
This is budgeted, I saw.
It's a budgeted item, I assume.
Yes, sir, yep, mhm, yep, very good, said, thank you.
Okay, well, I've got the, the microphone, I've got another project that IT is working on, we, we budgeted this year to have an employee, to hire an employee to, to assist with Munis support and projects, and we, we put the, the job out there for several months, and really couldn't find any qualified candidates, I had one person that, that I was looking at, but my, my main concern is that if we hire somebody, it's gonna take me a good year to get them trained to where they can support Munis, because we can't go to college and learn Munis, we can't go to school and learn Munis, we have to learn Munis by experience. My biggest fear is that we spend this time and money and get this person experience supporting Munis, and then just another city grabs them up. And about that time, I was about to make a decision on an employee, I had a colleague reach out to me, that a gentleman by the name of Chris, Chris Smith, he's, he just started a company, and what he's doing, he's actually out of Mobile, and he's bringing in Tyler Technology employees, so employees that have worked for Tyler, for, for Munis, that on, on different modules, and, and forming a company to support governments with this very same issue, that, that there's no one employee out there that knows Munis, so he's, he's putting it to like a consultant business together, and he, he came in and talked with all of our employees, and he's gonna be presenting a, a proposal to us next week, and so I just kind of want to give you guys a heads up, that I'm kind of leaning in that direction, if, hopefully it'll work out to where this company can come in and support our Munis needs, get, get us to where we need to be with Munis, help us get to where we need to be, there's a lot of projects that we need to do, it's just, we don't, I don't, you know, we just don't know how to do it, it says there's, Munis is a big program, and historically, you know, when we had the AS400, we had, we had a similar company do the same thing for us, his name was Randy Holloway, so if, if we ever needed anything with the AS400, you know, report, he would come in and just do it for us. And it worked out really well, I mean, it, that relationship was a very good relationship, and, but we just never had anybody to help us support Munis like, like Randy Holloway did. And I, I don't think, I don't really see a downside, if, if, if this guy's, Chris Smith, his, his company doesn't work out, and we just simply don't use his company any longer, and put the job description back out there, and wait, and hopefully maybe somebody would come along, but to me, this is the best approach, because he's, he, first of all, he's bringing employees that worked for the company itself, I mean, he's, I think he's already got three or four employees lined up, and I, I don't know, I just, I just think it'll work out for us in the better, in the long run. So, I mean, we had $70,000 budgeted for this position, and so, it may, it may work out financially better for us in the long run, too, you know, if, if we have to pay an employee $70,000 plus benefits, you know, it adds up, so, we'll, we'll just have, you know, wait and see how, how it all works out in the end, but just want to let you know, that's kind of the direction I'm leaning towards now, and, and so, I just want to kind of give you a heads up before I bring it to council and say, hey, I want to hire this company, uh, so.
Yeah.
I hope I made sense, but...
That makes sense, I appreciate the heads up.
Alright, any questions about that?
No, no, we'll wait to see their proposal, like, that's all we can do.
Alright, thank you for your time.
So, thank you.
Alright.
Appreciate you, brother.
Thank you.
I guess Mike is gonna do Hunter's stuff today, you want, there's nothing really, okay, we got the, that's an ordinance, we got the agenda, so final adoption.
Annexation.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
What about number nine?
Adoption, number nine is the, oh, that's, that'd be either George Lad or Richard, yeah.
This is a insurance thing, from Hurricane Sally, we've been working on trying to get it since Hurricane Sally.
So, totally reimbursed, 18,000, so 31,000, 18 something, 31,000.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, so, just 100% reimbursement, correct?
That's it.
Alright, very good. Council, any questions on that? Alright.
We'll be done, finally.
Hallelujah! Yeah, yeah, alright, guys, I think we've gone through everything, alright, we'll see you guys back at 6 o'clock. I wish I could say in five minutes.